Room at Reading Town Hall, sixteen Mill Street, Reading, Massachusetts. On Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. 对我说 Anthony Silva pursuant to match general law chapter forty A section nine and or ten for a special permit, variance or other relief under running zoning by law section four point five, five point three, six point O, six point three, seven point O and seven point two. As may be determined by the zoning board to raise and rebuild a two story single family dwelling with not nonconforming front yard inside your setbacks. The property located at fifteen Temple Street assessors map sixteen lot three forty two in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection, I'll suspend this reading of the reading of the butters list except to say that the butters were notified as were the following. The select board and town clerk, police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department, assessors office, engineering division, community planning development condition and a member and associate members of the board of appeals. As well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Stoneham, Weaver and then Wilmington. Um so the testimony before this board is given under oath. So if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Um I swear that testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. The response is I do.
I do, I do.
Great um yes, we just wanna get started with your application.
Yeah, sure, so I sorry, go ahead.
Oh yeah, introduce yourself and get started.
So I'm Tony Silva, I'm the applicant, I'm a resident at fifteen Temple Street. Um I do have some slides that I didn't share in the present in the submittal, is it possible to show those or should I just talk through what you've got?
Go for it.
And do S K and then you should be able to pop it right up.
That's assuming I'm probably on your Wi Fi, I don't think, oh, Epsom projector, look at you fancy.
Uh should be select.
Select board project.
Yeah.
Looks like it's grabbing Epsom projector first. I look at the wrong one, let me see if I can.
He's now he's emailed it to me too, if that's easy.
There we go. I had no idea you could do that, it's pretty cool.
Mr. Chair, just very quickly, I do want in the interest transparency. Uh Mr. Silva, you and I do know each other, we uh both have daughters who attend Barrows Elementary. We have not discussed this matter or this hearing at all, is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanna make that absolutely clear and the fact that we do know each other and that we do have.
And just so I if I could um introduce myself to the board, I'm Jim Alvianni, I happen to be his uncle. And uh I just figured I'd show up just for a little excitement during the meeting, so thank you.
We appreciate you showing up.
I also do. So thanks again, everyone here and uh also I appreciate that I'm the only one on the agenda, so we'll do this as quickly as we can. Um so this is basically the the proposed project, right? So on the left existing, on the right obviously proposed. Um you can see the house is uh is obviously pretty old, eighteen ninety it was built. Um assuming you guys read the submittal, so I don't have to get into a ton of detail, but you know, it's a legal one story. Uh the upstairs is our two bedrooms where my wife, my infant son and my two other children uh share two bedrooms and so we are looking to expand into uh a comfortable home. And so this is a proposal here. And basically the reason that we're here is because the lot is obviously existing nonconforming. Uh we're sort of right up against um the curb in the front. Um so I guess the the long and short of the lot is that based on the setbacks and if I were building to the setbacks and also accommodating the uh one hundred foot um buffer for the wetlands in the back, I would have about one hundred square feet of buildable space. So um we're looking to basically just keep the lines. So this is the property report card. Uh I've highlighted the yellow one family, but um you can see the footprint of the home on the top right. And really the story here is that is what I'm asking for, those red lines uh extending uh what are either existing nonconformances or inboard uh on the property of those nonconformances. So um again, this is the plot plan existing and proposed from the uh civil engineer. Um this is a look, obviously rotated ninety degrees, so we're sort of looking north to south roughly uh at the property. Um just sort of overlaying the proposed and you can see just from the faint uh dash lines and the footprint of the existing underneath. We're not actually extending in any direction over the existing lines. Um so this is just a little bit tighter look, the
Maybe just leave it for a second.
We'll sit there, yeah, um so the uh I guess that's that's really the story, um and I guess I'll sit here and see if you guys have any questions for this.
I guess just typically the question standard, just like one question about the plot plan specifically. So how far in your property is a hundred foot setback go? That's that's not on the plot.
Yeah, sorry, um I guess, yeah, sorry, it's roughly about halfway through the structure, actually. And I do have a drawing that I could show, but but yeah, I guess so I guess I should also add this has already gone through uh conservation was approved last month. Um so basically this exact footprint and extension back in the property, but but the hundred foot buffer is roughly roughly halfway through the existing dwelling and obviously the proposed one.
Okay. And just very quick, Brad, uh in terms of the relief that's being sought, is it specifically a special permit for the extension of the nonconformal use or is it a variance as well?
As discussed with the applicant, I mean, he is decreasing, I would say, the nonconformity. So so my only reason for the variance was because voluntary demolition and reconstruction need to have the existing footprint or you need to meet setbacks. This is making the s- the nonconformities lesser.
Yeah.
But it's not the same exact footprint.
So it's actually it's a reduced it's a reduced footprint.
So he could tear this down and build rebuild the same house by right and then come in and get a stress permit and extend everything.
Okay.
But just by reading the voluntary demolition and reconstruction, it's either, you know, current footprint or meet the setbacks.
Okay.
You know, and he is making it better, you know.
So for variance for variance purposes, essentially what the argument is is that this is less uh obtrusive than perhaps the the property had been previously, so it's they're actually improving upon the
Setback wise, a hundred percent, yeah.
Yep, I mean, it's just by it's just in the seven point eight what what gets me is why I wrote it up.
Okay.
The way I wrote it for everything, you know, special permit, variance appeal. Um again, he could tear it down and rebuild the same exact house by right, which would you know, extend these setbacks that he has proposed.
Mm hmm.
Um and then get a special permit.
At that point in time without the uh requirements of going through all of the the variance aspects then. But it's because it is being raised and rebuilt over the outside of the actual footprint. It is the circumstances where we are requiring that variance at that point.
Yep, and I just put it as that, I mean, if if the board feels otherwise and, you know, it is, you know, if they feel a special permit or however they feel and, you know, it is reducing it is reducing the the setback.
Okay.
You know, but it's not it's just not in the same exact footprint, basically is is how it how it went down.
And we're going from a front setback of what was it, six point five to twenty, is that?
Uh no, so it was roughly four point five to going to six point five.
Twenty is what's required.
Twenty is required, sorry, okay.
Yeah, it was only four point six previously.
From the nine to thirteen.
Correct.
Okay.
So I I guess, yeah, for just to get back to that real quick, yeah, I did fill out the variance criteria and it is in the submittal package, so I don't have a problem going through that, but
uh there's not a lot more here, I guess I just wanted to sort of park here and see, you know, this story is very simple, right? We're we're looking to just extend those lines, obviously there's rules about uh raise and rebuild. So the only other um thing that I wanted to show, right, was just an overlay again of how this lays on the property relative to the neighbors homes and uh extended a line along the back, just showing that, you know, this isn't not going any larger really here than than what I'm surrounded by. And also wanted to provide perspective on its position relative to the sidewalk compared to the neighbors, right? So obviously um right on top of doesn't stand out or really close to being right on top of, doesn't really stand out. Um so that said, I do have, I think this, yeah, so um so basically this is what you see, that's pretty, that's an eye chart, but um so basically, right, the the um conditions of the lot, right, um are such that this is uh the narrowest lot on the prop on the on the street. Um there's um as I said before, less than a hundred square feet of of by right buildable property. Um taking into account the setbacks and also the um the wetlands boundary. Um so as far as uh literal enforcement of the provisions relating to the circumstances effectually affecting the land or structure. Um so basically our only option is to put it, you know, sort of right on top of and obviously as we said, it's it's right near that. Um so this is really just us sort of straightening those lines out and being able to uh actually fit in you know, what is logical space, uh the living space that we're trying to achieve. Um and then, yeah, we uh we don't assume that there's gonna be any detriment to any public good uh based on this uh approval. And then um we definitely don't intend to nullify or derogate any of the intent of this.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have questions or comments or?
I was looking at seven point eight, it's really B. Says in the event that proposed construction would cause the structure to exceed the lot coverage of the original building or structure or cause the building or structure to be located on other than the original footprint, you could approve it as long as it doesn't extend in a nonconformity or create a new one. Okay?
Yep.
It's silent on if it does create a new nonconformity or extend an existing one, it doesn't say who approves it.
Correct.
So I'm just kind of wrestling with that one.
So I'm just kind of wrestling with that one.
Cause you're really not creating any new nonconformity with regard to setbacks, you're making it slightly better.
Yeah.
Okay? And uh
I I think you could argue that you're extending nonconformities, cause some portions of the lot inside the setbacks are bigger than they used to be. But you're definitely not, you're decreasing on the setbacks, but.
Well, you're definitely extending a nonconformity.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're not creating any new.
But the key word to extending a nonconformity is the word I think they use in here, which is significant, extending. That becomes again, what you think about it and what I think about it, what's significant or substantial, you know? So I'm still wrestling whether variance is truly required or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that you have.
Unbalanced with what they're dealing with, they they have no space.
Yeah.
They've gotta deal with what they gotta deal with, okay? And basically the what's there is grandfathered in pretty much every way, shape and form. Whether or not extending a nonconformity is a real serious issue, and I don't think it is, so.
I'd be more inclined to grant a variance just to cover all bases and necessary. Just in case it does end up being necessary at that point, whether or not it is necessary, just to make sure that there is no question at that point going forward.
I can understand that, uh the only thing different for the variance is that it goes through the property forever.
Sure.
Okay, whereas a permit is not, so but I mean, I don't have a problem with it, frankly, either way.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other, sorry?
Nothing, I don't get anything, or?
No, not really, I mean, i- if it runs with the land, this one, at least the setbacks are now more conforming, so it almost seems like the next person has to be using.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm inclined to agree with side that, yeah, I was thinking of seven point four section two and B is a little unclear. I don't know if we can just arbitrary rules, but it seems like that seems like the type of thing where they should have specified that should be a special permit. There are a lot of different things where it says, you know, in these circumstances, it should be a special permit rather than a variance. I guess Andrew, you have any input on whether we can just we just make a determination about that or?
Uh you can make a determination, you know, from the staff standpoint, we see it as like the voluntary demo and then a new nonconformity found that requiring a variance, so we we just prefer uh ensure our interpretation, you know, stay fit, but of course, whatever you decide, you know, we can work within those parameters, it's just future applications we want to be cognizant of, so um we fill the voluntary demo, section applies to then require a variance.
Yeah, that might make sense to me, just like a precedent.
Yeah.
Perspective.
Chris's point is well taken, I mean, it's
It's, yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where we don't necessarily have a problem with the project at all whatsoever. It is the language of this of the ordinance itself that we are grappling with more so than anything else. In order to ensure that this property actually gets the relief that it that it needs, then I think we're we're more inclined to grant a variance at this perspective, uh at this at this point rather than uh our kind of quibble over language, so to speak. I'd be happy to make the most, actually, did we want public comments or?
Public comment, I don't think.
I would, I do not actually have the, uh thank you. Thank you, so I will move to grant the petitioner Anthony Silva, variance from sessions uh six point zero, six point three. And I'm sorry, Brad, what? It was seven point eight of the zoning bylaws in order to raise and rebuild a uh single family dwelling on the property located at fifteen Temple Street, Reading, Massachusetts with the following dimensions with a nonconforming side yard and front yard setback as depicted in surf life plot plan.
You just say submitted with the record.
Thanks. It's appreciated, thank you. Submitted with the plot plan uh and certified by Kevin, I'm sorry, it's Kevin. Denary? Fleming, oh Fleming, I apologize. Uh for the record.
And if we can also just note the architectural plan submitted in the application for the record. And that's all you have to say, I don't have to mention architect or addresses or anything.
And then the architectural plan submitted for the record as well.
Do the conditions set up apply for
They do actually, um.
Conservation Commission's already been
Yes, the conditions, um I don't know if you can understand the conditions, that means
I thought this could just be special.
Special permit required as well.
Typically for any building.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would also have the motion for special permit, I moved grant the petitioner Anthony Silva special permit under section seven point zero.
And Brad, any of any additional for the special permit?
No, I think you just read the conditions.
Just the conditions.
Just the conditions themselves, the special permit is subject to the following conditions. The petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Number two, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number three, as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Second. Uh vote, all favor?
Aye.
All right. All votes. Okay.
Good, thank you all very much.
Hey, have a good night.
I have a question, how did you um how'd you get your rendering or the plot plan image onto Google?
That was pretty cool, wasn't it?
So it's Google Earth.
Yeah.
Is a, you know, Google Earth app that you download, right, it's not Google Maps.
Oh, okay.
And you can actually
Put your images on it.
Import an image and then position it appropriately and I obviously just scaled it so that it would fit.
That is good to know.
Yeah, happy to do lessons. There's like a seven week application process.
Need to make sure we get it to you in time.
Yeah, yeah, there's there's a meeting in a couple months, you can handle the agenda, yeah. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Um Thank you. Yes, my first one is um for October eighteenth of last year. Any feedback on that?
I would comment that these three sets of minutes were vast improvement in the past.
Pretty good.
You're working hard.
I don't have any comments for that one, I really don't.
Yeah, neither do I. Yeah, motion to approve?
Motion to approve as
Second.
All favor?
I will abstain.
Okay.
Sorry, what grade is that, ten?
That was ten eighteen, twenty two?
Yeah, last year.
Last year.
Maybe now we're even as hard as that.
Uh all right, the next set is April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Any feedback on this one?
That one was pretty good for me too.
Yeah. All right, uh you were here for this, Chris.
I was here for this one, yay!
Uh got my motion to approve.
So I moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I think it was one more session? Yeah, so January thirty first of this year. Um any feedback on this one?
Same response, no comment.
All right, motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Great. Um I think there's one more thing on the agenda about twenty twenty four schedule.
Yes, so I think amended century, I could be wrong.
I didn't get it.
I didn't.
I don't get it.
Okay, um we should follow up with that then, um.
It would be appreciated. This is strictly informative, right?
Yes, yeah.
Um so we are looking for twenty twenty four to stay on Wednesdays just because it feels like right now that's that's working best in early winter and so hopefully that can um happen going forward, so we're looking at, I want to say, what is the
If I can make a request about those Wednesdays and push those to the fourth Wednesday of the month rather than the third Wednesday of the month.
Fourth Wednesday is happening.
I'm also flexible after November if we wanna go back to the Tuesday, Thursday.
Yeah, um I will look at the fourth Wednesday, some wouldn't be an issue.
I'm also fine going back to the Tuesdays too, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um good to know, I'll check in with Cindy, I feel like she needs Mondays, has some issues, but I can't remember.
Uh yeah, she has something.
Yeah, um but I know that's after win- over after winter too, um but okay, that's fine.
I've been appointed to a board that meets on the third Wednesday of every of every month, so I'd prefer to not have a conflict there.
Great to know, well forward that, I'll take a break for now, forward that to you guys to lock some gates in, um. I wanna say our next meeting right now and I hope none of you are gonna come meeting members, cause we tentatively have it scheduled for November fifteenth, which is snapped up in the middle of town meeting week, um but we have a few applications and just given the challenges we've had finding dates um to get forums and other meetings and that whatnot already scheduled, that the fifteenth works well for us, so we're hopefully it works for everybody.
That is not a town meeting day though, is it?
Not, no, so town meeting is the thirteenth Monday and sixteenth Thursday, fifteenth would be the Wednesday.
Okay, my wife is a town meeting member and we have the uh the child at home, so.
This is the third Wednesday though, so it is November fifteenth.
Otherwise have a small, like an eight year old girl wandering around and wondering, asking questions and saying, why? But why?
Actually, it's very cute, you want to come in for Z B A members?
I assume over eighteen.
That would be quite entertaining, my my eight year old sitting next to me, okay, but why?
Yeah. All right. Actually, it's very cute, you want to come in for Z B A members?
I assume over eighteen.
So yeah, we'll we'll confirm the fifteenth with you guys, cause I think that works, yeah, and it's the third Wednesday, but okay, um.
No, that that my those, yeah, I've I've already approved those, so we're good.
Great, perfect, so we'll look for that going forward and we'll confirm all of that if not tomorrow, next week, so.
Awesome.
Cool.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.
we should follow up with that then. Um
Okay.
It would be appreciated. This is strictly informative, right?
Yes, yeah. Um so we are looking for twenty twenty-four to stay on Wednesdays just because it feels like right now that's what's working best in early winter. And so hopefully that can um happen going forward. So we're looking at, I want to say, what is the
If I can make a request about those Wednesdays and push those to the fourth Wednesday of the month rather than the third Wednesday of the month.
Fourth Wednesday is every Wednesday. I'm also flexible after November if we want to go back to the Tuesday, Thursday. Okay. Yeah, um I will look at the fourth Wednesdays. Hmm, if it isn't an issue, um
I'm also fine going back to the Tuesdays too, so.
Okay, huh, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Alright, uh um good to know. I'll check in with Cindy. I feel like she's Monday is some issues, but I can't remember.
Cause I know she has, yeah. Uh yeah, she has something.
Yeah, um but I know that's after win over after winter too. Um but
Okay.
that's fine.
I've been appointed to a board that meets on the third Wednesday of every of every month, so I'd prefer to not have a conflict there.
Great to know. Well, forward that, I'll take a electrolysis now for that to you guys lock some dates in. Um I wanna say our next meeting right now and I hope that we are town meeting members, cause we tend to have it scheduled for November fifteenth, which is snapped out in the middle of town meeting week. Um but we have a few applications and just given the challenges we've had finding dates um to get forums and other meetings and that whatnot already scheduled that the fifteenth works well for us, so we're hopeful it works for everybody.
That is not a town meeting day though, is it?
It is not, no. So the town meeting is the thirteenth Monday and sixteenth Thursday, fifteenth would be the Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. Okay, my wife is a town meeting member and we have the uh the child at home, so.
This is the third Wednesday though, so it is November fifteenth.
No. Otherwise have a small, like an eight-year-old girl wandering around wondering, asking questions and saying, why? Like, why?
That's all. Tomorrow is Monday, why?
Actually, it's very cute. You're not coming for Z B A members?
I assume over eighteen.
That would be quite entertaining, my my eight-year-old sitting next to me. Okay, but why?
Um um so yeah, we'll we'll confirm the fifteenth with you guys, cause I think that works. Yeah, I know it's the third Wednesday, but okay.
Yeah.
Um
No, that that my those, yeah, I've I've already approved those, so we're good.
Great, perfect. So we'll look for that going forward and we'll confirm all of that if not tomorrow next week, so.
Awesome.
Cool.
That's good.
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Right.
Second.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, thank you.
That was